Good evening, everyone. It is November 19th, 2024. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting. May I have a roll, please?
Mr. Rodehaver.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Stapleton.
Has everybody read the minutes? Any changes? So approved. We have new business this evening. Um, Mr. Sors, you have a presentation, sir?
Yes, so we will need to untable today's discussion on TA-01-2024, uh, which was previously back on October 15th, 2024.
Motion to untable TA-01-24.
We were under the impression that we were doing the new-
Replat first.
Replat first.
Oh, would you like to do that first?
I was under the impression that that's what we were gonna do.
Okay, we can certainly do that, so no worries. We'll make that quick and easy, so, uh, we'll go ahead and get started with S-04-2024. If you look at the maps, you'll see I provide a satellite image as well as a 11 by 17, uh, plat map as well, uh, the record plan, uh, that's gonna happen, so. And it seems kinda confusing because they're the same property in S-05, which follows after it. Uh, one is a lot combination and the other one's a lot split, and that has to do with the sale of land and to prevent land locking. So if you actually look at the satellite map and look at Record One and Record Two of those maps on your desk, uh, you can see that, uh, if these lots were to be split off, it would create a, uh, landlocked parcel, which on the satellite map would be where those semi trucks would be, uh, that are parked there. So, we had to go through and remove that boundary for 1840 Cardington, which is Yole Transportation. Uh, they have to do a lot combination first. Uh, that does create a new lot number with that, uh, and then we'll be going back in S-05-2024 to do, uh, the new lot numbers for the two different lots with the lot splits, so. Uh, this is mainly for formality and to make sure that we're doing the proper process per the engineer and everything. Uh, let's see here, so you'll, you will see that they're combining the two lots into 7.235 acres, uh, to prevent landlocking a parcel. And, uh, when you look at 1840 Cardington as well, there is a, uh, easement access as well, so that does not, uh, cause any landlocking of any kind. Um, and that is the main gist of this, it's combining lots 3194 and 5513. Uh, and it's, I know it's pretty straightforward, but it's just to make the lot into one before we get into the next section on S-05-2024. Does anyone have any questions, or if you need me to help clarify anything, I'm more than glad to.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
May I have a roll, please?
Mr. Stapleton.
Aye.
Mr. Rodehaver.
Make a motion to untable the-
What, what, when are you gonna ask S-05 next, so?
Motion to approve 05?
Did you need any, uh, background information on it, or are you good?
I think, I think you just gave it to us.
I know, I kinda, I kinda knocked them out both there, but, uh, it's essentially just, again, formality, uh, it does establish two new lot numbers within the city, uh, with that lot split. Uh, it's for the sale of land for, um, the lot below it, and, uh, Yole will still continue to still have some property as well, uh, for their storage of trucking and everything. Um, but yes, we can move forward to approvals.
My apologies, so, we have an, we have a motion, do I have a second? I will second. I have a roll, please.
Mr. Stapleton.
Aye.
Mr. Rodehaver.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Motion to untable 01-2024. Have a second?
Perfect, so.
Do we have to take a roll on that? I don't think we have to.
Mr. Rodehaver.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Stapleton.
Alrighty, so with this being untabled now, uh, we're looking back at TA-01-2024, which was previously, uh, held on October 15th, 2024, and was tabled. Uh, this had to do with a, uh, planning commission case to amend the Moraine codified ordinances to prohibit the cultivation, processing, testing, and retail dispensing of marijuana for the purpose of adult use in all zoning districts of the city of Moraine. Um, and we will go ahead, and, uh, Martina, if you have anything you would like to report as well, uh, feel free to, uh, come up and, and report on that.
Excuse me, I don't have anything to add, other than what we discussed at the last meeting, other than to just clarify that the ordinance that we proposed, uh, at the last meeting, uh, was to prohibit the cultivation, processing, and, uh, retail sell of the adult use marijuana, and did not address the testing. So I just wanna make that clear, so we're just talking about, uh, dispensaries, which would be the retail sell, and cultivation, and processing, and I understand from the last meeting, uh, what we did was, we wanted to have another meeting tonight, so that we could hopefully garner some additional, uh, um, input from the public one way or the other, but we don't have anybody that's shown up, and so just for the record, Mr. Sors, did you have anybody contact you to provide any feedback from the public?
I did not receive any emails or phone calls regarding this matter.
So at this point, I would say, um, the Planning Commission's free to engage in further discussions if they want additional information from us. Um, I would say at this point, you just deliberate and decide how you wanna proceed at this point. Um, I know Mr. Sors did provide some additional information, I believe by email yesterday to the Planning Commission, that I pulled from the Ohio Department of Commerce website on non-medical cannabis, which was basically their frequently asked questions, which provide some additional information, and also the OAC 130118, which are basically the rules that have been adopted thus far with respect to licensing, ownership, and operation of adult use cannabis facilities, which as you can see, if you peruse through there, I highlighted in yellow some of the more pertinent information. Uh, from my perspective, they are very heavily regulated as far as, uh, how old you have to be to enter, the, uh, identification you have to prove, uh, to show that you're 21, both before you enter and before you purchase, and, uh, the security cameras and things like that, that, that's the type of information that is, uh, contained in this additional information that was provided, so. At this point, I would say it's up to the Planning Commission how they would wish to
I must say that I'm a little disheartened that nobody showed up. We did put in, I know the city, um, put in a lot of effort to put this out to the public, um, and, um, bond.
So I would just say at this point, you just need to proceed however, you know, your discussion of vote goes, and again, like I said, if there's additional information or, uh, additional items you would like to get from us, of course, we can always table again, provide you with the additional information. Uh, I think I mentioned at the last council, or excuse me, at the last Planning Commission meeting, city council did adopt a moratorium on this until September of 2025, so, and we did that for the primary purpose that's, that we wouldn't be rushed, that we had plenty of time to discuss this, look at it, and decide how to proceed, so, uh, just FYI, there is no really deadline, or you're not under the thumb to make a decision, so.
That's a plus.
That's a plus.
Um, you did provide us with a lot of valuable information, and I thank you for that. Mr. Davis, do you have anything further that you would like to add, um, from the last meeting?
Uh, I had nothing additional, however, I remember in the prior discussion, there was some questions specifically around some of the stats that the police chief had provided.
Yes.
And Chief Richardson is here tonight, he can go over those, uh, report there, and if you guys would use, uh, the light here, those.
Want to interrate on any of that, or?
Hi. Uh, my name's Craig Richardson, some of you know me. Uh, grew up here, been a police officer in Moraine for 30 years, been the police chief for the last 11, and I, I guess I just have an opinion, a public safety opinion, not more legal, uh, ethical, any kind of health, just a public safety opinion. Um, the recreational marijuana law is so new in Ohio that there aren't any real good stats for us to compare to. Um, the best I can do, and even, even it was in the Dayton Daily News, I think it was last week, was, um, they're comparing stats before medical marijuana and after, and, uh, one of the stats they had in the paper last week was, uh, since the medical marijuana went in to affect, uh, children overdoses on marijuana have increased 571%. And, uh, it is a 125% increase just this year, and they're attributing that, I think most people attribute that is to the, just the readiness, the availability of, of the, the marijuana, the, the edibles, the gummies, uh, everything else. Um, as far as long-term stats, one of the states that, that we try to look at to compare is Colorado, so Colorado has had recreational marijuana, uh, for almost 10 years, and, uh, Colorado has half the population that Ohio does, so they're, they're just under 6 million people, and we're at just under, I think, 13. So, um, all the, the stats may be comparable, um, there's a potential that it could be worse here because we have a significantly higher population. So, in Colorado, after they introduced retail marijuana stores, their ER visits in general went up 30%, and their marijuana-related incidents in emergency rooms went up 200%. Uh, the kids age nine and under increased of over 500%. Uh, marijuana overdoses in kids nine or under went up 500%. Uh, marijuana-related traffic deaths went up 62%, and, um, workplace injuries went up 55%. And, all of those things that, that I mentioned right there are drains on your public safety, your fire, your medics, your police departments, they're the ones that are, that are responding to those calls. Um, even as far back as, uh, 10 years ago, under the Obama administration, when the federal government was talking about legalizing marijuana, getting rid of marijuana off the scheduled drug chart, and letting the states control it, they identified certain things that they knew were gonna happen based on things that, uh, that they assumed were gonna happen based on, uh, what happens in other countries. And, one of the things that they mentioned was the, the likelihood of behaviors, marijuana-related behaviors, is going to increase negative contacts with law enforcement, and, uh, negative contacts with your, your other public safety agencies, your fire departments, your police, uh, medics, uh, paramedics, EMTs, that kinda thing. Again, just drains on public safety resources.
Now, in these stats, sir, are any of them just strictly marijuana, or is it also any other opioids or alcohol?
Those, those are, those are just marijuana stats.
Okay.
So, um, because it is legal, uh, there's a, most of the, in, in those states, recreational states, um, there's, there's not a whole lot of immediate statistics known, and like I said, we use Colorado a lot, just because, uh, they've been doing it the longest, and they, they kinda have a, a similar demographic and population, so. Most of those stats were off of the Ohio, uh, Office of Justice programs, federal government, uh, website, federal government resource, so, and then again, the Dayton Daily News, that, that, a couple weeks ago. So that's, that's my opinion, uh, appreciate you listening. Um, I don't know that I, I have any pertinent answers to any questions, I can try, though, so.
Anyone have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Martina, I, I do have some more questions, um, for you, if I may. Sorry not to call you out and put you up, up front. This moratorium, can it be changed, anyway?
Yeah, so currently, the moratorium prohibits, uh, adult use marijuana cultivation, processing, retail sales, uh, temporarily, until this went to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to council, that's why that was put into place. Um, so yes, if, uh, if you were to decide, okay, we wanna allow it, so we need to amend the zoning code in order to do that, so what I would say is, uh, if that's the way you go, then we would go and work with Mr. Sors in order to determine which zoning districts would be most appropriate for this, and then bring back some legislation, present that to council, and at that point in time, when council were to vote on the zoning, then we would either, you know, get rid of the, well, either way, we'd have them repeal the moratorium, and then, uh, you know, enact the zoning to either prohibit it or allow it, so yes.
So it can be repealed?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that was, that was a temporary moratorium that a great deal of cities and townships in the state of Ohio adopted, ju- just to give them time to look at this and decide what they wanted to do, whether they wanted to allow it, prohibit it, or allow it with some, you know, restrictions as to location, et cetera.
And, and I, I read through all 77 pages of that, believe it or not, um, and I know that, um, these places can't operate within 500 yards of any school, church.
500 feet.
Yeah, 500 feet, um, and then one mile from any other dispensary.
Right.
Um, so this could be changed to where later on, when we do have better statistics showing more solid evidence on this, it can be repealed?
Yes.
It can be changed.
Changed, revised.
I know that a lot of these cities, um, and this is just a statement, um, I know a lot of the cities are placing the moratoriums in place to keep an eye on things-
Yeah.
-and see how-
How it goes.
-go, as far as crime rates, get their statistics for their cities. I know that there's plenty of, uh, dispensaries around, that they have access to. Could this have been brought to ballot?
Um, I would say no, because the, the state of Ohio already did put it on the ballot, and so-
Now it falls to the, each municipality?
It falls to each municipality to decide, that's why they put it in the ORC, the state took it to the ballot, the voters of Ohio voted on it, voted to approve it, I believe by 57%, if I remember correctly, but they did include into the, into the Ohio revised code that individual cities and townships could decide if they wanted to prohibit it, allow it, restrict it, so, they give the cities that ability, just like they did in the medical marijuana back, I believe in 2017 or 18.
We have time to deliberate?
Yeah, you can deliberate, as long as you, you know, you have to talk loud enough so that people can hear your deliberations.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Rodehaver.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you speak into the microphone so they can record it, sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
Questions whether-
Speak up, please.
Questions whether or not we feel comfortable voting on this without the public actually being here, or whether they take their vote that they had previously, you know, as with their representation.
We do, I'm playing the devil's advocate here, we do have to take a lot of things in consideration. Um, we do understand that there are, that 2/3 of the voters voted for recreational, doesn't mean they, you know, we're gonna approve or disapprove. I do know that, um, there is a lot of revenue, but if it's, we can kick back and keep an eye on things, place the, the stats in the city's hands, so that they can understand what's going on with these, these places, and it can be rescinded. They can, they can remove it, they can change it.
More or less extend the moratorium, or continue the moratorium.
And if I'm correct, this, this moratorium, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to wait till you sat down. Um, so this moratorium, in my understanding, is that it's going to go into September?
Of 2025.
Of 2025, and then, where the other one will be lifted, the medical, but it's the dual purpose, or dual usage, or dual sales, I should say.
Well, the city back in 2018, I believe, already amended their zoning code to prohibit medical, so the zoning code already prohibits medical.
Right.
The current moratorium in effect just prohibits the recreational, i.e. adult use, until September 25.
And then can that, can that moratorium then be extended if they chose to?
Yes.
In September?
Beyond September of 25, yeah, if they, if council chose to, they'd just adopt another resolution extending that moratorium beyond September.
We had one prior.
Right, we've extended it once or twice, I believe.
Okay.
Because, well, in the first time, we were waiting because the state was supposed to put out rules, so the first time or two that we had the moratorium, we thought the state was gonna put out the rules, it, that took longer than we expected, so that's why we eventually extended it to September 25, in addition to giving, uh, you know, time for the Planning Commission to look at it, because we didn't want you to be, again, time crushed.
Continue the moratorium.
Are we able to do that?
You can, what I would say is, if you wanna do that, I would say, um, maybe leave the moratorium in place until September of 2025, maybe look at it again, see if there are any statistics right around maybe July of 2025, and if there aren't, then maybe we could report back in the summer of next year, and you could take another look at that time and see if there are any statistics or not.
So essentially, your suggestion would be maybe table this until July of 2025?
That's what I would say. Until June or July, and see if there are any statistics, I don't know if there will be or not, but, again, you could table it, take another look at that point in time, and then decide if you want to make a recommendation to council at that point in time, to either move forward one way or another, or say, hey, we still don't think there's enough statistics, why don't you extend that moratorium until we get more statistics to take a look at this?
I mean, we are definitely taking all the statistics and, and, uh, and looking at all of it, whether it be, whether you're an opponent or a proponent of it, um.
And Chief did mention, and I think we talked about this last time, that even if you prohibit the commercial side of it, the law still does allow the home grow for six plants per person, 21 or over, over per household with a, a cap of 12 per household, so.
Correct, and if I'm not mistaken, there was a section that I read concerning the transfer of said plants, as long as there was no money exchanged.
Yeah, so if you're, if I'm growing my six plants in my home, and I wanna gift some, some of my six plants to somebody over 21 years old, I can do that, again, as long as there's no money exchanged, so.
Do you honestly think that that would happen?
I'm gonna take the fifth on that one.
I'm skeptical, but-
Yeah, what people do, yeah.
If I just jump in, sorry, uh, Martina, I do have, I do have a question, uh, is there any legality issues if our department and Planning Commission were to form, like, say, a survey similar to what, uh, the surveys we send out for, uh, say, the Master Parks Plan, or Comprehensive Plan and such, to help gather some data from Moraine residents? Is that something that's totally legal and okay?
Yeah, I think if you wanted to maybe put a survey out there and see if people would respond to that in writing, maybe people just didn't feel comfortable showing up and giving their opinion in open meetings, so, I would say that, that would be an option if the city wanted to put a survey out there and see if you could get some feedback that way.
I would be more comfortable in knowing what the citizens have to say.
Sir, Chairman, if we were, if we were to do a survey like that, are we allowed to require an address or something to confirm that they were present versus someone making a comment or support or non-support outside of the city?
Yeah, I think we'd have to look at that a little further, maybe we could look at that, if they wanna table it tonight, we could look at maybe the best way to do a survey and then report back.
Just so we capture essentially what you're saying.
Absolutely.
I agree.
I, I am 100% agreement with you on that, I mean, you gotta, I mean, you're gonna have people from Dayton and Fairborn and everywhere else putting their input, and we don't need their input.
On some of our regional activities, like our parks plan, we're having that, by both ways, I just don't know whether we're allowed to make them identify.
Yeah, let's, right, right, yeah, we can take a look at that and see if we can do that, I think we probably could, as long as they were, were advised that it's completely voluntary, you know, the survey is not mandatory, if you are voluntarily willing to provide your contact information, you know, then we can do that, um, but, we can, uh, probably take a look at that and then figure out what might be the best way to go about that, if we can do it, and then report back. That's what I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Um, so we could do a survey, uh, now, would they, I know some people would not be comfortable, um, with it being public knowledge?
Yeah, 'cause they would be, those would be public records.
Correct.
So, that may be, that may be a little chilling, too, if people, you know, 'cause I, if we did a survey, I would make sure I would put in bold letters right at the top, this, it will be a public record, you know?
Correct.
And, uh, if, if I wanted, if somebody wanted to come in off the street and make a public records, record, request for those surveys, they could do it, so, that might be the downside to getting, uh, again, more feedback. So maybe the, the better option might be to, um, wait and see, wait until, uh, June or July, see if we get some statistics, and then have another meeting and discuss this further at that point in time, which way you wanna go.
Okay.
That might be more beneficial, I'm not sure, as we're talking through it, I'm not sure many people would respond if they're gonna have to give their name and address, knowing it's a public record.
And that, too, yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, they're not comfortable about showing up.
Exactly, so I'm not sure how comfortable, as we're talking, again, as we're talking through this a little more, how they would be about putting their name and address on a, on a piece of paper that's gonna be a public record, so.
All right, well, that, um, anything else for-
Yeah, hang on a minute, I, I, you know, I know that there's a lot of, of people that are gonna say, well, there's a lot of good to this, and there's a lot of bad to it, I mean, it's, but this is all very new, I understand that.
It is, it is very new to the state of Ohio, I mean, the, the recreation, obviously, the medical's been, you know, in effect for some time, and I did speak to, um, I believe this was after our last meeting, the, uh, one of the attorneys at the Ohio Department of Cannabis Control, who is very helpful, I've spoken to him a couple times, and I don't know if we got into the, the tax calculation last time, but basically, I wanted to confirm with him, and I think that was actually after this, after that last meeting, I had the conversation with him, so there's just- conversation with him, so this is just additional information, because I certainly understand what the chief is saying with respect to the drain that, that this may have on fire and police services, and so, for example, I confirmed with him, currently what the ORC says, is that the ten percent, the portion of the ten percent tax that the city were to receive, that can be for any purpose, approved by the city, so if the city, as long as the city has approved the purpose, you know, we want to use this for roads or whatever.
Correct.
As long as the city has approved it, you can use it for that purpose, but that could change, they could change the ORC to say, no, wait a minute, you can only use it for these purposes, so that could change in the future, so just to, to put that information out there, and the example he gave me as to how to calculate that ten percent was, let's say, for example, you have five dispensaries in the city, and those five dispensaries generate ten million dollars worth of sales in one year, so ten percent times ten million is one million dollars, thirty-six percent of that one million would be three hundred and sixty thousand, that would be the amount that the city would receive.
Right.
So then, if you look at that and say, okay, does that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars mean as much if the police and fire are using their resources to respond? How much does that cut into that three sixty?
Correct.
So that could be, I'm, I'm just putting that information out there, so you can obviously think about that as well, so.
And I did, I, I also looked at numbers, and, and, you know, there's a lot of dollar signs in there.
Yeah, there, there's, they're, they're making a lot of, of money in, in sales, you can go on the Ohio, I can't remember the figure off the top of my head, I think it was, maybe close to or over a hundred and fifty million dollars that the state has made since, since August of this year?
Yeah, I think it was a one hundred million dollars within the first sixty days in revenue, and it's projected to reach one point three billion dollars by next year.
Yeah, it is a lot of money, but then, obviously, you know, I think chief's points are valid, you have to consider, okay, is, is the money worth it if the police and fire are being, you know, called out exponentially more than they would have been?
And, you know, I, I strongly believe that we have a responsibility to the citizens. Gentlemen, do you have any further questions?
Not at this time.
Stapleton, did you have a motion?
Motion to table this until July of twenty twenty-five, until such time that we either have some more data or a survey sent out, and able to gather some more information.
Thank you. Oh, you have to vote, I'm sorry.
Ready for a roll?
Yes, may I have a roll, please?
Mr. Howard. Mr. Stapleton.
Aye.
Mr. Rodehaver.
Aye.
There is no other business?
I do not, just want to thank you all for being here, and, and being communicative in this process, and want to thank Brett for taking minutes and roll call, and Chief Richardson, and Ms. Dillon, and Mr. Davis for being here as well, to help us supporting data, so.
Yes.
I just want to give a thank you to them, that's all I have.
Thank you for, for your input, it is appreciated. This time, we will adjourn at six thirty-three.